Welcome back, everyone. Echo test? Someone is still on? We're good now? Sounds like we're good. Okay. And I just. Yeah, I just thought I would repeat because we did start and close this morning. How in Squamish welcome to the Squamish Nation Unceded in Traditional Territory. We are continuing our Committee of the Holes for Tuesday, June 27th. I'm acting, acting mayor Chris Penningill, councillor, filling in for acting mayor councillor Stoner, who's in Zambia. And we are on to the Squamish Library 2022 Annual Report. I'd like to welcome Ms Bloom, the library director, and Ms Loudon, the chair of the board, to tell us about what happened in 2022. Oh, Mayor Hereford.
Just a quick point order. I believe this is a different meeting, meaning to adopt this agenda and so on, although it's Committee of the Whole, but just.
Yes, thank you. I'm getting too eager here. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mayor Hereford, councillor Greenlaw? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Ms Bloom.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. This is the library's first time in front of the current council and we're really excited to be here. So my name is Hillary Bloom. I'm the Director of Library Services. And to my right is the Board Chair of the Squamish Public Library Board, Molly Loudon. Just share my screen here. It's the.
So we are just sharing things if you're seeing a black screen. Something's coming.
Okay, thank you. So we're here today to present our 2022 Annual Report and give a brief 2023 mid-year update. The annual report, as well as the Provincial Library Grant Report, were both included in the agenda package that you received last week. And I've provided paper copies of the annual report this morning as well. So essentially, in the summary that the report contains, we talk about 2022 having been a slow but steady reemergence to, I guess, whatever you would consider normal, pre-pandemic type of activity in the library, which was a really exciting thing to start to experience after a couple of very challenging years. We certainly saw activity levels get busier in many different ways, which also reflects the expanding and changing community that we serve. In the annual report, we have a little summary, really just a snapshot of a few highlights from 2022. And the way that they're organized is within the four strategic priorities of our current strategic plan. So I wanted to just point out a couple of the fun ones. One of them was that we hosted for about six months an augmented reality sandbox in our foyer. And that was a really interactive opportunity for kids of all ages to play and understand and learn about topography and geography as they moved the sand. The overlay shining from above would change and teach them about elevation. It was really, really fun. It was also very sandy. We also, one of the main things of 2022 was the completion of a fairly large-scale interior renovation to the library. That included the addition of a new takeout window that opens out to the back of the library, to the exterior. So very convenient opportunity for people who are in a rush. And with limited parking, it's always helpful to just be able to pull up. We also added or changed the position of our service desk to a central model. And we changed our staffing structure so that at any time, there are always people right there poised and ready to assist. And we've noticed a really big uptake in the amount of interaction with the public because they feel so much more welcome to come and engage and get the help that they're looking for. We partnered with the United Way to have an exterior mural painted on the back of the library. And that was a community-led process. The community was invited to partake and paint parts of it. And on the digital version of our annual report, there's actually, the mention of the mural has a link to the video that was made summarizing that experience. Another successful event I wanted to highlight was the film screening and community conversation based on Gabor Maté's documentary, The Wisdom of Trauma. And that was actually held virtually because I believe it was still in the middle of Omicron. But it was a very successful online community conversation and was a way for us to bridge and play a role in the library as part of the Community Resilience Committee that we're a part of. So helping to make opportunities for our community to learn more about some of the challenges that we experience in our community to do with things like addiction and mental health challenges. We saw the return of a lot of in-person programs. And some of those were in person, but they were actually outside. So we had some bat walks. We had a story walk for Family Literacy Day. And our foyer gallery came back into full form. We've changed the structure a little bit, so the shows are actually each longer in length because we found that people weren't necessarily able to come in and see each show as they were turned over every month. And this new model seems to be working very well. I will add as well, there's more bat walks scheduled for this summer if you want to try it out. And then just more photos to demonstrate a few other things. We held a community open house in the fall and we invited municipal council and mayoral candidates. And that was an opportunity for people to learn all about the many things that the library does. And it felt really great to be able to do that in-person event. The bottom left with the picture of Kate holding a bunch of books is part of the Reading Link Challenge, which is an ongoing event. This was the 14th year, I think, that it's run for all grade four to six students in the school district, reaches thousands of children over the last 14 years. There's a picture of our renovation. It's a little hard to see, but you can see the yellow hexagons and the teal wall. And that's been a great, new, bright and bigger space. As part of the renovation as well, it expanded the staff work area to give staff a better layout and more space to do their work as well as accommodate additional staff. There's a picture of some smiling staff members doing a library card signup promotion. And then there's an aerial shot of the mural being painted. It wasn't quite finished yet. In the library, we report to the province a lot of statistics. I don't think there's anything that we don't count. We count everything. And so this is again, just a little snapshot of some of the highlights. So you can see that compared with 2021, there was a significant increase in a lot of areas, one of those being in-person visits up 142%. That's really no surprise considering how limited we were before. But in addition, things like the number of holds being placed up 59% over the year before is very significant. It shows that our takeout service and this takeout window and those things that we implemented during COVID have really caught. They really fit a need. And so people have used that more and more. And I also noted in the text up there that, because this isn't reflected in the graph, that virtual visits have more than doubled since 2019. So again, one silver lining of COVID was it encouraged and taught people how to access our services in other ways. And for many people, they find that the opportunity to visit, place holds virtually, use ebooks, all sorts of different things that they hadn't experienced before are parts of their library experience that they want to continue with now. And then this is just a little snapshot of the most checked out titles by genre. And I think that the fact that under Adult Nonfiction 21 Things You May Not Know About the Indian Act, I believe that was actually the top title in 2021 as well. And I wanted to highlight that because we do have a large number of copies of the title. We've done it as a book club a number of times. But I'm proud of that, that that is in fact the book that gets borrowed the most in our library. And I think it speaks to a lot of the initiatives around reconciliation and opportunities to learn that we make available to Squamish. And Llama Llama Red Pajama, it's just always up there. It's just always a favorite. This is the financial part of our annual report. And to be clear, the left-hand pie chart at the top under revenues shows that by far our largest funder is the District of Squamish. And then the pie chart to the right is a breakdown of the remaining funding sources because otherwise it would be very small and hard to read. So after the District of Squamish, we receive provincial funding. And that's tied to that provincial grant report that was included the agenda. We annually report out to them on what we've been doing. The Squamish Lwet Regional District provides annual funding. We get funding from the province for Canada Summer Jobs staff, as well as a number of other things. The library is audited annually by the same auditing firm as the district. And then our board has presented these statements in March and approves them annually as well. And there's a really long list of thank yous. And again, it's in the report as well, but just an acknowledgement of the number of agencies and organizations that support us and that we rely on and work together with to do lots of fun things. As well as a list of the trustees that were in place in 2022. And a few more little fun facts around some statistics. The individual e-newsletter sent, the 60,000. Our e-newsletter is so popular and so clicked on and read like nothing I've ever seen before. I was a bit skeptical when we started it, but when we ask and we do surveys on how people found out about our programs, that is the main, main reason. So I guess perhaps in this day of social media where there's just so much coming at you in that format, the standalone email really does stick with people and it's their place. 2023 is zooming by. We've done lots of recruitment and hiring. There's been a retirement. But we have a new manager of operations, Raik Kobuka, who began in January. And then we've hired a technology coordinator who will be beginning next Tuesday. And the addition of these two positions has, even before the technology coordinator has begun, the addition of the manager and some other shuffling around of staff to suit the organizational review direction we're heading has been completely life-altering for our staff in terms of capacity. And for me personally, absolutely. And so I feel like it's a time for the library where we're really excited. It feels like we can get back to the business of what we're there for and figure out who we're serving and make sure we're figuring out where we need to go to serve that community. And the energy in the library is just so positive and excited. And if anything, I need to try to remind everyone to put on the reins a little bit just to not overdo it. But I really wanted to express my gratitude to council for their support of these requests that we've mapped out over the last few years as part of a rollout of changing our organizational structure somewhat so that we can do more. And if anything, by the way that these programs are oversubscribed and waitlisted. And we know that there's only much more potential and demand and requirement for more. And we're excited to be able to do that. Speaking of which, we're going to be launching the Library of Things in September. And I want to kind of leave that slightly mysterious. But it is a whole new collection, a lending library of untraditional, non-traditional library items. So we already started lending out a few things. We have some robots that people can lend and take home. But staff are busy bees in the back figuring out and purchasing all sorts of wild and wonderful and exciting objects that perhaps would be something that a family might like to try, but wouldn't necessarily want to invest in or wouldn't need to invest in if they can borrow it sometimes. So stay tuned. There's a whole campaign coming for that. And if you're not already following us on social media and in our newsletter, then you sure better get on that because that's going to be where you find out. And then the final thing I wanted to say that we've been focusing on this year is supporting our staff. So our priority this year has been to get staff trained in readers advisory or like helping people connect with the items that they're looking for. Because it turns out, you know, we don't all have every book in our brain and know every single title that there is to recommend. So it's actually an important skill that we're working to encourage our staff to feel more and more confident about. And then the other part of that is supporting staff in terms of having a big bird's eye view look at our policies and but more specifically, our procedures to make sure that they're still reflecting what needs to be in place, even for things like safety in the library and just consistency across the board. Because it has been a while since we've been used to having so much activity. And we know as the summer is hitting as well, we see an even bigger surge with Summer Reading Club and visitors to the community. So I feel really glad that I have the people around me to be able to take the time to figure these things out and make sure our staff feel well supported. So I'm going to pass it over to Molly now, who's going to give a little library board update.
Thank you, Hillary. Thank you. And I can just say, we were first in line at 10:00 AM when the Library of Things robots were released. And my nine-year-old took a robot home and delighted in playing with it. So I am super excited about the Library of Things, as is my young family as well. So this is my third year as Chair of the Board. And I've been on the Board now for six, I think, coming on seven. And I'm really delighted to report that we have a very active and engaged Board at the moment. We did a bunch of recruitment at the start of this term. We had a bunch of Board members, trustees terming off. So we did a campaign and it was very successful. We got over 13 applicants, which is the most we've had, I think, since I've kind of done this. So that was wonderful and some really truly excellent people stepping up and wanting to be involved in the Board. So we recruited five new. And you'll see them listed at the end shortly. So they're very engaged and active and really looking forward to kind of digging our teeth into supporting Hillary with looking at the vision, mission, values, and doing a refresh of them before we go into strategic planning. And a lot of that has been inspired by, I think, the work that's been happening at the district level as well. So really taking a look to make sure that these are the values and mission that we want to kind of lead us going forward. So that's work we'll be diving into in the fall. We've got an RFP that's just gone out today, looking for someone to come in and support that work for the Board. So that's taking place into the fall. And yeah, I think what we're really leaning in is what Hillary alluded to, is supporting Hillary to support the team, to do that growth and development, to get those policies and procedures into place. So this is the self-safe welcoming hub of our community that we can all be inspired to go to. So it's really an exciting time to be on the Board of Trustees. And I feel we've got some great people sitting around the table to do that work with us. So yeah, thank you. And yeah, here we are. And Andrew's not here today, but he is our council rep and has been fantastic in supporting the work as well. We'll open up for questions.
I'll just add one last little thing. This is the link to watch the mural video. But you can click on it when you see it in the digital version. But also I just wanted to point out that's a number of our staff members during Bike to Work, Go By Bike Week. And we've been known to win that for the district a lot of times. So and we're getting more bike storage shortly. So just saying, we're proud about that too. Okay, and now we'll open it up to questions.
Okay, challenge accepted. I'll go to Mayor Hereford and then councillor French.
Thank you for all the work that you do and the presentation, as well as the little, you know, trip on the bike to work. We'll see what, I'm sure the other departments can, other pieces of the district will rise to the challenge. I had a question around the library, or sorry, the technology coordinator position. And I'm just wondering how in, going back a few years, when I was the rep on the Board, there was a technology librarian was a position. Is that supporting that position? Has the thinking changed in how we deliver the technology and just how do those things interact?
Yes, thank you. We did have a technology librarian position pre-COVID. And then right around that time is when we undertook a more fulsome organizational review. And that person left the position and it was COVID. So through that, we determined that, in fact, the best way to move forward was to bring in a manager of operations and technology as one position. So that's Raya. And that person has technology as part of their portfolio, but it's also a huge job overseeing the day-to-day operations and supporting me. And then through that rollout of that plan, the position that we have added this year, beginning mid-year, is a technology coordinator. And that person reports to Raya, reports to the manager. And she will be far more on the ground, hands-on. So this is to support staff with technology. This is to support the public with technology. This is to be the liaison to the district's IT department so that we can alleviate some of the burden and expectation on them that we rely on right now for them to help troubleshoot us. And it's a really exciting addition. So what the community will be able to see is a good number of public programming opportunities, learning, tech help, drop-in. We'll figure out exactly where the needs are and how to meet them. But also, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that this person will be relied upon to make sure that our systems are running properly, that our staff are trained to help people with technology. Because the library is certainly a place where people come to for assistance. So you can imagine we're meeting the needs of people who are lacking digital literacy skills at one end of the spectrum. But then we're also trying to push the envelope with things like the Library of Things, which will include a lot of sort of technological gadgets, trying to give people opportunities to learn about where things are going and play into the future. So it's sort of a big mandate, but without having this position until now, it's fallen to, you know, trying amongst ourselves the best we can to do this work. And then Raya can oversee it at the higher level, but then Kayla will be able to be the one hands-on supporting. So it's really exciting.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate the adjusted approach. I think that that sounds totally reasonable and I'm very happy to hear that these services exist. So perhaps they can assist my mother with her iPhone, which is a challenge for me to do. So thank you so much.
Councillor French.
Thanks, Chair. I think I'll start with the robots. I didn't realize that robots were part of the lending library. Can you just give us like a one-minute summary of what these things do? Like, can I get one and have my dishes taken care of for her?
So I didn't know either. They're a small device on a track. So and it connects to an app on your phone. And then on the phone, you can use a coding app to design where the robot's going to go. So basically, my son would map out the lower floor of the house and work out how many meters he needed to send it in one direction before it made, you know, a 90-degree turn. So it was coding to then a robot that would kind of map out around the house. So he learned some coding and also some measuring skills, but I don't think it was capable of dishes yet. But we'll put that on the list.
Okay, maybe a little tougher question next. The donations and fundraising line in the report indicates $11,047 was brought in. And then just under that line, we see that fundraising expenses were $9,745. So I'm curious to know, does this mean that just over $1,000 was brought in through fundraising? When you do the math on those two numbers?
Through the Chair, thank you. One of the challenges in the way that the audit reflects the ins and outs is that the cost that we incur to pay for our foyer curator, because it's a paid position, is showing up as a fundraising expense. I can't speak in great length to it, but the foyer gallery does undertake some fundraising. And in essence, to just break even and be a program that we can provide. But the term fundraising is problematic in that way because you see it and it looks like that there was, you know, a huge gala with $9,000 spent on it. When in fact, I believe nearly all of that was to pay for our curator's costs of running it. And that is something that the library funds on its own. It's not something that's supported financially by the district. So we do the fundraising just to intend to offset any of the costs that come about by providing that public gallery.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that explanation. It makes it clear and it also alleviates my fear that we were spending a lot of money to bring in not a lot of money. So thank you for that. And my last question, I also wanted to share that in preparing for the meeting today and reading the staff report, for the first time, I watched the United Way video of the mural. It is a great video. I highly recommend following the link. I was riveted. And so the tablets in the Hublet program, I think I came away with the impression that they stay in the library, but I just want a confirmation that that is the case as opposed to the tablets being taken out of the library for a number of days to be returned?
Yeah, thank you. The mention of Hublets is in the Provincial Library Grant Report. And it's something that we have purchased and are still waiting to arrive to add to our in-library services. So yes, you're correct. We looked at, we currently have six PCs, public PCs, to use in the library. And we wanted to expand out the number of computers that could be used in the library just for people that are coming in to do whatever they want to do without their own device. And we decided to go with this Hublet solution with tablets rather than thinking about laptops. Because we thought about having laptops that you could spread around in the library. So yes, they are just for in-library use at this point. You sign them out with your library card. They only work with the public Wi-Fi in the library. And but through the Library of Things, we are now rolling out some lendable technology, including likely some iPads and things like that, that people can take home with them. The needs of, the digital needs of the community have really changed. Like, we used to have eight PCs and when we did the renovation, we brought it down to six. And we haven't noticed it to be a problem because most people now do have their own devices and can hook up to Wi-Fi. So they're wanting to use the space in the library and they want to use the Wi-Fi and they want to use the printing services. But we don't have as much of a demand for the public PC. So that's just been a learning. So in the same way with the tablets, it allows people that don't have their own to sign them out and to use them there. But yeah, we're just sort of, we're gauging as we go. And that's actually another aspect that I didn't mention is our focus and our emphasis on evaluation and trying to make sure we have our finger on the pulse as we go, as we do things. And is it hitting the mark? Is it not? So the, and the other thing that we had added, which has been a really great addition, is that we have wireless printing and wireless payment in the library. So just for public printing, because a lot of people don't have their own printers anymore. So a lot of people just come in and do their printing with us. But this wireless system that we have through an app has been a game changer too. So there's been lots of things that have sort of come together to provide a pretty seamless service.
Great. Yeah, I haven't had a printer in my house for six years. So thanks Chair.
I have a couple of questions. Now, the one engage and welcome everyone is one of the pillars in the strategic plan. And listening to the news, aside from inspiration and education, libraries are functioning as just a safe space for people for many reasons. Getting out of the heat or just whatever's going on in people's lives. Are you seeing a change in, in, in Squamish in why people are using the library? Why they need to come to the library? And I wonder if you can speak to that a little bit?
Thank you Chair. And we are, and I mean, this is the thing is people are coming back to the library. And why they're coming back, we noticed that it is sometimes for that change of scenery. So they have a lot of people, more people now work remotely. They get tired of being in their home office and they come to work somewhere different. We see people who have felt socially isolated and they just want to be able to be around other people and chat with the staff. We see people certainly with the heat domes and the cold temperatures, we are air-conditioned and heated. So, and dry. So we see that certainly as, as needed. I will say that one thing I've noticed is that because we share the same block as the overdose prevention site and under one roof, which provides housing and food and many resources for vulnerable populations. I have seen that a lot of people who may have otherwise not had somewhere to be in the daytime before under one roof opened, now have a place that they can be outside of the library. If they, you know, they're welcome in the library as well, but there was a time where people didn't necessarily come to the library for any other reason that there, other than there wasn't somewhere else they could be during the hours between the meals, for example. So that's been, that's been a really great thing. So, but we're just figuring out who's around and what they need. And that's kind of what we're paying attention to right now. And it's, it's all of the things that it used to be and it's all the new things. And we're only, I mean, our, our in-person visits were up a lot from the year before, but that was only about 65% of pre-COVID levels in terms of visit, visitors. And anyone who was on council pre-COVID or during COVID will know that our former Chair David Gaten and I used to come here and speak often about the bursting at the seams experience of the library. So we know that that building isn't big enough and we know that there aren't, we, people need meeting spaces. People need private meeting spaces and we don't have enough of that available for people. So those are all just things that our board is thinking about and, and considering as, you know, we move forward and figure out how to address that in, in, in the coming years.
Thank you. And actually somewhat related to that, wearing my SLRD director hat, seeing Britannia has a second reading for Tiger Bay coming along. And before, we've talked about library expansion. It's always been in my mind, you know, sure, serving Britannia a bit, but mostly serving Squamish. And, and this has got me thinking like, ooh, what are the needs? And when do we say actually Britannia needs its own branch? Or is this an opportunity for us to really expand Squamish? And maybe this is a, a bigger question for another day, but I'm wondering if you have any initial thoughts on where those things could or should go?
Thank you Chair. So I am in regular contact with the Area D Rep Tony Rainbow about this and other aspects of the fact that Area D, especially Britannia, but also Furry Creek, there's all sorts of things in the hopper as far as growth. And as it stands right now, the formula is static with the SLRD in terms of the funding support to the library. It's not tied to population. And so I've been encouraging strongly Mr. Rainbow to, there's, there's some efforts being made to look at that bylaw and have some changes made. I know there's been other more pressing priorities in the last few years as well. Because we are, that, that funding is, is in recognition of the fact that we do serve that population as well. As far as whether or when there might need to be sort of that, what's, what's the tipping point for, for a branch? We were exploring various things at one point. We were looking at mobile libraries. We were, we've talked about like a broader SLRD initiative, maybe across the areas, something that's, you know, helping Whistler, Squamish, Pemberton. We've jumped up all sorts of ideas. But in doing that, sort of realized that it's, in fact, it's the SLRD's call to come to us and tell us what they need. We don't need to, we're tasked with plenty in terms of just doing what we're doing now, but we would be open to the idea because this region is, is popular and growing.
Hey, thank you very much. Not seeing any more council hands and we're a bit over time. So thank you so much for the great report and everything you do. It's, I'm a long-term member now of a reading group, which is again, I think I've said before, but not something I ever expected. But it's been a real sort of cornerstone of my week to catch up. And, and it was out of the 21 things, I think the first group that came out of. And so, yeah, the library just touches so many parts of our community in such a positive way and very thankful to have it and your team here. So thank you very much. Mayor Hereford.
I'll just move receipt of the report. Yes, it's not on the agenda, but it seems appropriate.
Council French, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. So thank you. I think I'm, pass it over to Mayor Hereford, maybe?
Well, Chair, just, I'd like to point out that the next item on the agenda is the financial plan workshop. And one of the things we set out to address in this is a concern voiced by Counselor Hamilton, who's not currently here. So I, I would suggest, I'd like to suggest that we move lunch up and address that after lunch and just buy some more time and hopefully he'll be able to be here for, for that meeting. And I don't think that, the timeline should be similar. So I don't think it should affect any external people that are attending in the afternoon, just for your consideration.
Okay. Has anyone done the math yet on what time we should come back? Were recess, recess now? Okay. So let's come back at five to one. And we'll recess, recess until five to one then. Thank you. Okay, welcome back everyone to Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 27th. And there's a little blurb, which I forgot to read this morning. There's no one in the gallery, so I think it's okay, but just in case, please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded and will be available to the public to view on the District Squamish, District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. And with that, I will welcome Mr. Fordham to talk about our financial plan workshops and public engagement.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Fordham. I'm the Public Engagement Specialist here at the district. My pronouns are he/him, so please feel free to refer to me in that way. I am joined today by Heather Boxer, Chief Financial Officer with the district. And today I'm going to take you through some details about staff's proposed schedule for the 2024 to 2028 financial plan workshops, as well as some proposed changes to the timing of public engagement to support that financial planning process. After that, Ms. Boxer will take counsel through some quick highlights of the 2024 to 2028 financial plan. So just some quick background information to inform this discussion. In 2021, the district shifted the timing of its annual budget process to adopt the budget in December rather than in the spring. We've now gone through two budget cycles on this new schedule. So the 2023 to 2027 financial planning process and the 2022 to 2026 were both adopted in December. So with that shift to adoption in December, it's required a shift to the public engagement timing as well. And in particular, a shift in the timing of that public information night that we've hosted in the fall. So since shifting the budget timing, there's now less time between the public information night and when the budget's adopted in December. And staff have heard concerns from council about that shortened timeframe and a desire for there to be more time to sort of consider feedback from the public and incorporate any changes that might be needed. So in response to those concerns, that's why we're here today. We've proposed some changes to the budget, public engagement timing, and I'll, I'll get into those shortly. Before we do that, I wanted to bring up the proposed financial plan workshop schedule for the 2024 to 2028 financial plan. And this is important because it will determine when the draft budget package, after it's been reviewed by council, is, is sort of pulled together and complete. So looking at this, staff are proposing a workshop on capital projects on July 25th before the summer break. And then the workshops would resume in September and October to discuss the remaining portions of the financial plan. I think it's important to note here that October 17th tying it all together meeting or workshop is when the complete draft budget package that's been reviewed by council will be ready. So in past, or as in past years, we'll release budget spreadsheets with each of those workshops. But those spreadsheets can change as the workshops move forward and those changes won't be reflected until that October 17th meeting. So again, that's really when the final draft budget package is, is prepared. Should also be noted that the timing of these workshops hasn't shifted much from previous years. As staffer are already well into the budget planning process for, for this budget cycle. So the changes that we're proposing are really to address council's concerns are really on the engagement timing side. So I'm going to get into those now. So what you're looking at on the screen here is the proposed public engagement schedule for this year's financial planning process, the 2024 to 2028 financial plan. And it really kicks off alongside those workshops. So we've got what we're calling a Budget 101 campaign plan that will run alongside those workshops. And that's going to really focus on building understanding of how the budget works, how it's developed, what goes into creating it, rather than specific details about what's actually proposed in the financial plan itself. So it's going to provide background details so that residents have the information they need to provide meaningful feedback once that draft budget package is, is available. Once those workshops wrap up, we're going to move into some coffee with council sessions. So these are an opportunity for council to meet with residents, discuss the budget in person, discuss what's proposed in the draft financial plan. And it's another, we're proposing it as an opportunity to get some early feedback in the process to hear directly from residents about what's proposed in the plan. Another advantage of these is it provides another opportunity for residents to meet in person with council, have discussions about the budget. Some residents may have scheduling conflicts for that public information night. So it's just another chance to sit down with council and have those conversations. Speaking of that public information night, it's highlighted up there in red. We are proposing to host this on the week of October 23rd. And this is that large evening event where council and staff are, are on hand. We invite the public down to discuss the draft financial plan. That's a fairly large event. By having it the week of October 23rd, this would be about one month earlier than we've hosted it in previous years. Last two years, we've held that the last week of November. So this would open up more time for feedback that council hears during that event to be considered and incorporated into the budget process as needed. Following, well, launching around the same time as that would actually be the budget survey, which we've done in previous years as well. So this survey will, will ask for feedback on items that are specific to the 2024 to 2028 financial plan, but we'll also bring in some prioritization questions that we've asked in previous years so we can start to compare some of those results. We'll, we'll take the whole summary of feedback package to council in late November and that would be a summary of all the feedback we heard across all channels throughout this engagement process. That would be again in late November. And then we'd be looking at a budget adoption in December, either the 12th or the 19th. There's a few things that we'll, we'll do to sort of support some of this public engagement process. I've already mentioned that Budget 101 campaign kicks off with the financial planning workshops. Of course, we'll have our Let's Talk Squamish project page live to support the budget process. So allow us to host a bunch of budget resources in one place, information, links to the draft plan. And then it also allows people to ask questions and for staff to provide answers in a time that's convenient for them. We will have some in-person displays set up within district facilities. So Brennan Park, the library, the 55, as well as Municipal Hall. And those displays will be accompanied by comment boxes. So people can provide comments and feedback in person about what they, what they're seeing in the budget or what they would like to see in the budget. And then that last item there, Questica slash Open Book, this is the district's new budget software and it's currently being customized. We're expecting a September launch. And this is going to provide some new ways to show the budget to the public, to provide some visualizations of what's actually in the budget. And just a new way for people to see what's actually being proposed in that draft financial plan. And of course, all this is going to be supported through the district's communications channels. So social media, email, advertising as appropriate to sort of spread the word about what's going on. And then in addition to what we're proposing for the 2024 to 2028 financial plan, we're continuing to work towards ways to find opportunities to add more time into the budget engagement process. So what we're proposing is to an annual spring launch of budget engagement to begin this spring in 2024. And really the spring budget engagement would be a check-in with the community. It's a chance to, or a check-in with the community and it would focus on years two through five of the most recent financial plan. It would really be a reminder of what's proposed in the five-year plan. And it's an opportunity to check in with the community before that financial planning process begins. So feedback from that would be shared with budget managers before they begin their budget requests each year for the annual cycle. And it'll also be shared with council. So you would have that information with you as you work through the financial planning workshops each year. Just an important note here, that wouldn't change the budget engagement for the fall. We would still each fall move forward with a similar budget engagement process as, as just been outlined in this presentation. And with that, I will hand it off to Ms. Boxer.
Great, thank you, Sam. Council, would you like the opportunity just to discuss this before I move into the key elements?
Mayor Hereford? Yeah, thank you. I'll take you up on, on that. I'm curious, the, the timing, sorry, I had it up here. The timing of the engagement, I appreciate it moving. And then that late November summary of engagement feedback shared with council. Is that where, if throughout that engagement, sort of that last piece of the, of the engagement, you know, it became evident that there was an appetite or demand for, for a change? Is that where that change could happen in that space as well? It's, it's, so the report speaks to engagement being shared with council, but doesn't really speak to the mechanism of, of acting on the recommendation of that engagement. But that's what I think was implied there is that there'd be opportunity there. I know we'd like to get to a point, be at a point where, you know, everyone we engage with gives us the thumbs up, but that's, seems to be unlikely.
Yes, thank you for that question. Yeah, absolutely. That would be the opportunity where council could refer to the budget. So it could provide staff that, that direction to say, hey, you know what? We're going to refer this to budget, whatever that topic would be, whatever the, the change is. And then we could incorporate that into the financial planning process that, that early or late spring, early summer.
I mean, but that late November piece is what we've heard from the public on the, on the, on that year's budget. So is that the opportunity to adjust that specific budget? I think what you just, what I just heard there was referring it to the next budget cycle, which could also be appropriate. But would there be a, like a built-in space to have that discussion? And to see if it's something, whatever the issue is that boils to the surface, is something to be best addressed, you know, immediately in the current budget that, that's about to be considered for adoption or to be passed to the next budget cycle?
Through the chair, yeah, absolutely. Sorry, apologies. I was, I was thinking you were referring to the spring discussion. No, the November discussion, absolutely. That is council's chance to say, okay, this is the last bit before we go into three readings and adoption. So at that point, council absolutely has the opportunity to add something in, in that November discussion. And that has been always the case year over year, past several years.
Thank you. And on that point, would that be in the same meeting or would it be in a subsequent? Thank you. And on that point, would that be in the same meeting or would it be in a subsequent meeting? Like once we digest that feedback or does that, have we got to that granular consideration, consideration yet? Like I'm just thinking this late November summary of engagement feedback shared with council. Is it at that same meeting where we, we would discuss the change or is it like, I know there's not a lot of time there as much as we have more time than we have, have had, you know, when we move in sort of two-week increments, it moves really quickly.
Through the chair. So yes, traditionally, that's what we've done is, is said, you know, there's, there's that opportunity at that meeting. And then certainly you would have the chance to review it at the three readings at that time. However, if council does want to provide more direction in terms of adding another meeting, if you know, is there a significant shift, we could look at that. Absolutely.
Counsel Hamilton?
I'll just chime in on, I, I do think it's important that we have some separation between receiving the feedback and making recommendations on budget changes. It's very difficult to do both of those things in, in one meeting. We need time to reflect on things and to, to take, we need time to receive feedback as well. Yeah.
Counsel Anderson?
Last fall, when we discussed or winter perhaps it was when we discussed the budget, budget survey results. The observation was made, I think by myself, but perhaps others as well, that one or two of the questions, the choices that available for the public were mixed between values that they were preferring. And in programs or project initiatives, they were mixed, causing a little bit of confusion. Do I, well, that's, that's motherhood, if you like, and I'll vote for that. But is there an opportunity to sift through some of those questions where there was a mix of what to choose? And I guess secondly, do you design the surveys so that we can chart trends year to year? Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. I'll touch on the second part of your question first in terms of charting trends throughout the year. And that's really the goal of asking some of the same question year over year is that we can look back and see some of that, how things are tracking comparatively. That being said, if there are questions that need to be tweaked that maybe are, have caused confusion in the past or maybe aren't relevant today, then certainly we'll look at opportunities to, to change those to make sure we're asking questions that are, are giving us the answers that are, are meaningful. In terms of designing those questions, I think we have a, a fairly thorough staff review of that survey that we do every year. And certainly that's something we'll look to do again this year. To make sure that we're asking questions that makes sense today and are relevant to the community. Okay, thank you. Ms. Boxer, why don't you proceed and then we'll save some time for wrap-up questions at the end?
Thank you, Chair. All right. Heather Boxer, General Manager of Financial Services, and my pronouns are she, her, hers. So just wanted to provide counsel and the public with a few key elements in the direction of the 24, 2024 to 2028 financial planning cycle. So generally speaking, and in terms of generally, what I'm meaning by that is the, not just specific to the 24 to 2028. The district conducts this financial planning process as outlined in the long-term financial plan guiding principles and financial plan policy. It has four principal categories that were developed to guide management and council in the financial planning process. So those are stable and sufficient. And what that means is that taxes do not fluctuate greatly from year to year. And it is council's key priority to keep taxes rates low and balances this with increasing service level requirements. And then also it's in terms of reserve planning and infrastructure and facility capital planning. Sustainable and equitable is another category. And what that means is investment is sufficient to sustain the desired service levels indefinitely. And that everybody pays an equitable amount of, for the services that they receive. Prudent and flexible. So that's financial decisions aimed to minimize risk. And then financial decisions ensure future flexibility to adapt opportunities and/or changing circumstances. And then finally, efficient and measurable. So that services are provided in an efficient manner and then successes are measured using indicators and benchmarks. So as Sam mentioned, in June of this year, following training in the new budget software program, staff have begun the 24 to 28 financial plan. So in addition to those guidelines, staff will focus on adapting the financial plan in alignment with the following key areas. So firstly, council and staff have now completed the district's four-year strategic plan. With the 24 to 28 financial plan being year one of the implementation of this plan. The district is in our third financial plan cycle where long-term focus has been a primary and key element underlying to which the district conducts its financial planning. And then for the, so for the public and new counselors, what this means is that staff's goal is to address both short-term needs and long-term financial sustainability of the organization includes forecasting revenue and expenditures, renewing and reviewing master plans, prioritizing capital plans and developing strategies to address funding gaps and financial challenges. Long-term planning also aims to, to build adequate reserves and make taxation predictable so it does not fluctuate from year to year. Greatly from year to year. In 2022, council endorsed the updated asset management plan, which is a tool for council and staff to inform long-term financial planning and forecasting reserve contributions specifically. And addresses the costs and risks associated with replacement of the district's current assets. And that's really in order to sustain current service levels. The 24 to 28 financial plan will address the need for additional reserve contributions required. And this does include DCC contributions to meet the recommendations of the asset management plan. As well, staff are conducting, conducting master plan audits, which will address the infrastructure project, increase costs, risks and priorities. And it address any gaps that we currently have in our capital planning. Further, staff will ground truth, the capabilities of, in, of our capital plan or financial plan in terms of staff capacity for the district to undertake the projects recommended currently in the various master plans and present to council any gaps and options to address those gaps. Next slide please. So more, more specifically in terms of procedural and prioritization of the current financial plan and adding on the, the fifth year, when reviewing the financial plan and master plan initiatives, staff will prioritize initiatives with the following criteria. So, and this is not in any particular order per se, but it's life safety, legislatively required, community and organizational risk, the master plans, and then the district strategic plan. Thank you. Next slide. So I've added this slide as reminder to council from the 23 to 2027 financial plan. And where it landed in terms of the tax requirement, now it's really small, I'm noticing. Is there a way to hide? So just in general, so in terms of the percent increases from the 2023 to 2027 financial plan landed a range from 4.6 to, oh, thank you, to 6.7 for 24, 27, or sorry, 23 to 27. But just note, this isn't just a starting point. So this is what the five-year plan from the 23 to 2027, it's a launching point to which we will now make several, there are several estimates and we'll make several adjustments. For example, some of those adjustments would be the debt servicing is estimated in the year four to, to year five, or sorry, year two to, to year five. And that really is in line with how the capital plan will roll out and have when projects are completed and when debt servicing is required. As well, you'll notice that the non-market change is just 2% across the, the board, which is again, a very conservative estimate. Just, you know, in terms of 2023, we were at 4.8% and then in 2022, we're at 2.8%. And we fluctuated every, every year between two and three typically. And then finally, you'll note that we have the asset management increase, which was based on the recommendation of the asset management plan, which is at approximately 1% per year. And that will be reevaluated in this current financial plan, just in terms of incorporating costs and, and part of that master plan audit. So this is just a very preliminary view and there's lots to come and lots of discussion to come. Next steps is staff will be presenting the initial draft of capital in July, and then we'll continue the budgets process through the fall with various opportunities and workshops. Okay. So in terms of the recommendations we have today, staff are recommending that council endorse the proposed schedule for the 24 to 2028 financial plan workshops. And that council endorsed the plan, public engagement schedule and activities to support the 24 to 28, 28 financial plan process. And I will hand it over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Heford.
Thank you. I understand that soon we're going to see the capital piece. I was wondering about the timing of the non-discretionary and just how sort of understanding of what's baked in already and what we've already committed to, just for all those reasons that we end up being committed to something. Having that information, sort of those two, those two pieces being in different order and maybe, maybe that's not a not something that can happen this time around, but just, and I don't know how, how difficult it is to move the, to move the, the pieces, but could you speak to the, the timing of those, those two pieces?
Sure, through the chair. So typically the non-discretionary really is a fallout of all of the things that we have in that year. So or in that financial planning process. So it, it really can't be available before fall. The reason why we have, we can make capital available is it's a little bit more static year over year and with just additions. And, and there's, you know, sometimes some, some items are removed, but the non-discretionary really needs that fulsome, bring it together in order to, in order to present it.
Thank you. So given the, the sort of the nature of non-discretionary, making decision-making, it's at the tying it all together point where we may want to go back and revisit if we've overcommitted into a piece that we saw before we saw the non-discretion, the non-discretionary piece? Is that from a timing, from a timing perspective?
I'll take a kick at that. So the non-discretionary is, is first presented with the general operating. And then there's the SOP. So the special operating projects and capital comes back and then we bring it back, the tying it all together. There is the opportunity to make any shifts at that point in time. But the first glimpse that council will have on the non-discretionary is during that general, or general fund operating.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's just an interesting piece, this of which piece we're, you know, we're already sort of the foundational piece that we're already committed, committed to. So, but that's a helpful perspective. I was curious about the assumptions on the non-market change. And do you see refining those projections or do we treat whatever the variation is from our projection as other, you know, a, a helpful bit if it's, if it exceeds that, or hopefully not too problematic if, if we don't. So I understand sort of having placeholders as we get further out, but do you see refining that, that projection as part of your process?
Thank you for the question through the chair. We've had a lot of discussion about that. It is, there's a lot of moving parts and would take quite a bit of staff resources to refine that. And then the, the outcome isn't certain either way. So it's one of those things where we're looking at, you know, utilizing, it's, it's a priority situation in terms of staff resources. In terms of the following year, that is, that is more closely, meaning that year one, that is more closely looked at. And then future, it is really, really difficult to, to pinpoint. So I, my belief is that we won't get very accurate data beyond year two and year one, we'll continue to work with B C assessments to the best we can.
Yeah, thank you. I was just thinking about the next, like the, or the, the current budget we're working on, the whether it'd be impacted and just how refined it is possible to get that in a, in a reasonable, with a, with a reasonable workload, but that, that, that helps. There's a specific attention to that. I, I like it when the number comes in and it's, and it's quite helpful. But it'd be great to have an understanding of, of that as early in the process as possible. But I understand that it's to forces that are outside of, of us. So thank you.
Counsel French and then Counsel Hamilton.
Thanks, Chair. I think that I heard the answer to my question in the presentation. I'm going to ask it anyway, just, just for my own confirmation, it might be helpful for others. What impact, if any, would this, the shift in our timing have on the staff members that lead the various departments and are preparing budgets? And will it force changes for their timelines?
Through the chair. Are, are you talking about the shift in the public engagement? My understanding is that there would not be a, a change in, in this, the budget manager's approach to, to drafting their budget requests. Counsel Hamilton?
Thanks very much on the work to move the public engagement further forward. I think that's a really important step. On this, is it Questica, the online, the new software that's going to be online? What's the probability? And I don't mean like a number, what, what sort of level of certainty do we have that it will be online for September and available for this budget cycle? And if that probability is low, is there anything that we could do to make it a higher priority? I think it's very important that we have these tools online to increase transparency.
Thanks for the question through the chair. As you said, I'm not going to put a number to it, but I know that staff have already started working on what our, what our plans are to, to lay out what we're going to display this fall. So that work is already well underway. So we are working towards that September goal of having, of having it live to support this public engagement and, and budget cycle. So it's probably most I can say at this point. Ms. Boxer?
Thank you, Sam. And just to add to that too, that it will be an iterative process. It's the, the level into which the Questico open book module can go is, is quite impressive. Now we have to, we have to bring a phase and a phase approach to that and what works for the district, but it's exciting.
So I'm going to take an opportunity for a question, just make sure there's a, a common understanding. So we heard about one of the principles is stability in the budgets year over year. I think some taxpayers would feel that year to year, there isn't always that stability. And, and so I think if I'm understanding correctly, our goal is in the overall tax ask, the total budget number, that's where we expect to find the stability. And then unfortunately beyond our control, as B C assessment assesses different properties differently, different neighborhoods differently, there is more bumps and rises there. But our goal and our focus, and when we say stability, we're talking about the overall total budget ask. Is, is that accurate?
Through you, Chair. Yeah, absolutely. So when we talk about stability, we're talking about the tax revenue requirement. So it's, it's council and the district's goal to ensure that we're keeping that piece of it very stable. We have no, we have no influence over the stability of the market in terms of assessment.
Okay, Counsel Hamilton?
For the public info night, in the, in the reports, I saw you asked if the council wishes there to be a formal presentation. I think it, I personally believe it is important for council to, the mayor, probably I don't want to put you on the spot to, to make a presentation, to, to give it to an audience and for that audience to be able to respond with questions with all of council there to, to sort of, to publicly answer. So is there a space where is, you need more general guidance from the council or when would that decision be made as to whether we're doing a formal presentation or not?
Through the chair, exactly. If, if that's council's direction, then, then we can certainly work towards having a presentation at that public information night.
I, I think you could, and is that something that we would, you'd want that direction today or we would, as we come closer, we would decide upon that?
Today would be great. Mayor Heford?
Thank you. I think the, I think having a public presentation is, or a presentation piece as part of the evening, I think is, is valuable. I think that, I do think that generally a town hall format, which is essentially what you're proposing is could be, could be potentially challenging to actually have constructive conversation with, with the entire community. So I wonder about the, in the tying it all together presentation, this is really where it all comes together. If there's a way that we could elevate that where the, the experts or, or staff are presenting to the community. And that's generally been done in this room and through us. Perhaps that is the, the more appropriate avenue to, to promote and to highlight. And I mean, I'm here to, you know, at the, at the will of council to, to do things, but really the, it's the subject matter experts in this particular case that are best, that I feel are best suited. And we've, I've really felt those presentations to be incredibly beneficial to me and even having been at all the, you know, the, all the touch points. So I, I appreciate the general sort of goal. But I think, I think there's other ways to get there, but that evening event can absolutely have a set piece presentation. And then we go to, you know, the different, the different pieces of it we could support with council members and all the staff that's there and, and so on. So I just don't want to be too prescriptive with where it happens. But I do think there's a way to elevate that first present, that first presentation of the tying it all, all together is really what they essentially exactly what we'd be looking to present at the, at the, at that public information piece. So I think we could leverage those things better and structure them, but I don't, I want to be just cautious about setting up a town, a town hall situation as it's really hard to have a constructive conversation with a large number of, of folks at the, you know, at the, the same time and particularly on such a broad topic as the budget, which is essentially everything that we do here. So yeah, I, I'd be curious to get the other feedback from, from the group on, on that. But I, I think we have the same goal. It's just where really mechanism is what we're, we're discussing. So, which is a good place to be in, but.
So if I can, I'll go to you, Counsel French. I recall, I think a couple of years ago, we had, I believe, a staff presentation and we had some booths set out with counselors and staff out in, in the area here and a couple of areas in here. And people could call in and ask questions and we had that sort of hybrid mix of that discussion with, with the public in person or online. You know, some of the discussions that you've heard so far, is that the sort of thing, you know, a public presentation followed by that sort of engagement after? Is, is that what we're kind of talking about doing that kind of thing again? And maybe that's a question to the group. And I guess I'm not seeing any immediate hands. I'll go to Counsel French.
Okay, thanks Chair. And I think what I heard of, out of Counsel Hamilton speaking, I think aligns with what I just heard from you is a scenario where the public engagement night begins with a presentation of some kind, simply as a conversation starter. And, and, and from there goes out into the room and boards and stations and individual experts and council members throughout answering questions, addressing concerns. And, and then, and I didn't in the speaking here, town hall individual questions to the entire group, which I agree with the mayor are, are sometimes often almost always not constructive and not an ideal use of everybody's time in consultation like this.
Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. I wondered whether the budget 101 background or material is, is a new initiative in some respects. I don't recall specifically that that came up last time, although a number of years ago, there was a kind of a town hall event, a budget one-on-one session, but that's a number of years ago. Looking on the website, I couldn't find budget 101 in the 2022 budget. I just wonder what, what type of, is it a new initiative or to what degree is it new? And are you able to track interest? Will we be able to track interest in that material ongoing?
Thanks for the question through the chair. It, it's not a new initiative. We've, we've shared a lot of that same information over the years. I would say that presenting it in this way specifically focused around the council workshops is a bit of a new approach to it. So we certainly have a lot of that information shared throughout the past. We haven't formalized it into this budget 101 style campaign. I, I don't think officially. In terms of tracking it, it's an interesting question. I, I think probably we could, we could look through some of our past social media things and, and look at some interest there. That's just off the top of my head. But certainly explore some different ways and, and report back to council if, if there is interest in that as well.
Thank you. I might follow up Chair if I may. Will there be a similar effort as last year on a facilities planning questions that do arise with the public these days? We had specific effort to give some background on facilities planning in relation to the budget.
Thank you through the chair. Certainly whenever we're talking the budget, those are questions that come up all the time. So we will absolutely plan to have information around that facilities piece available to sort of guide some of those conversations. I know a couple of years ago, we had a specific facilities open house that is not currently in the plan as we've proposed here. But we, we would certainly plan to be sharing information about facilities.
Counsel Hamilton.
Thanks. Coming back to the public info night and the formal presentation. I am referring to a town hall style presentation. I, I understand the limited value that has in having a conversation. I think it has significant value in the community hearing each other. I think that one of the limitations in many of our, in, let's take for example, let's talk Squamish. Absolutely. A community member can ask a question. It doesn't get broadly out to all community members and that's reasonable, right? But I, I do think there is significant value in the community, hearing the community in person. I think to all candidates debates, to think of how much thought people need to put into their questions because they're asking them in front of their, their peers, their, their residents, their neighbors. I, I do think that's important. So yeah, I am referring to a town hall style.
Okay. And I guess just for my two cents on that, I think if we're going to go down that road, in my experience in those sorts of things, it's best to have a sort of a third party facilitator. Tends to be key. And so in terms of budgeting and timelines and getting all that, is that something, would that be a this year thing and that's still feasible? Or we would need a bit more planning to pull something with, you know, a bit of a, you know, so that people understood what the topics were and then how we're going to able to have a constructive, useful conversation for everyone in attendance and, and all those pieces.
Thank you Chair. We would, we would need to take that back and do a little bit more planning to, to figure out exactly what that looks like. But if that's council's direction, we can certainly do that.
Mayor Herford.
If we're thinking about how valuable this engagement is with, for the, for the process, I think we may be just describing two events because I'd hate to use the one set of time that we have in, I think it's important we use it in the most productive way, way possible. And I see the value and I appreciate that, the logic of that, but to essentially by that format, we are de facto denying the, the other format, the community access to the other format, which is the boards with the experts. And at, at those meetings, in, in my experience, I've, I've so often needed to defer to, to the expert or have a chance to introduce the, the public to the person that is the expert and bring them into the, into the conversation. And I know that that's been extremely valuable for, for members of the community to build on, to build understanding. So I think if we do the, 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 the town hall approach, I think that we're saying no to the other approach. And because the two, the two can't happen in the same time in the same space in my, in my opinion. And be something to, to, to move for staff to, to weigh in on. But if we have one evening where we're going to focus the, the engagement, the chances of doing, given that that one format that we've used took an entire evening. I don't know how we add a town hall aspect to that and not deny that other and, and not step away from that other piece without having two sep, two separate events. And that's something to, just for the group to consider and me.
Counsel Hamilton.
Yeah, I was absolutely not referring to an or scenario. I was referring to an and scenario. I can, I can envision the possibility of having a poster style presentation, even in the same room we were in last year, where people who want to, who know what they want to ask, who know what they want to understand, get more, they can come and talk to staff. They can come and look at the books and look at the posters. And then that might answer their questions. But there are going to be, and I believe there are a host of community members who want to ask questions open and in public and hear our answers open and in public in front of them taking responsibility for our choices in the budget process. And I think that's an important part of it. So having a poster session followed by a formal presentation, some town hall style questions, and then even going back to smaller, less formal question period. I don't see why that can't fit in one evening. That would be my ideal vision.
Mayor.
Maybe a question to staff on this is like, I don't recall the last time there was a town, something that would be considered a town hall discussion. I'm just curious what from your perspective, the time requirement would be for something like that in a rough, like just as we're, as you're hearing the conversation around, is this one event, is this two events? Can all these things fit, fit together? The most recent one we had was, I thought we got lots of engagement, but it was also in the midst of a snowstorm, you know, and coming out of COVID, like it, it's, it's hard to, I'm having a hard time sort of under, understanding these. And I think I would like to, to make a, if we're trying to get to a recommendation on this particular piece today. So could you, what are your thoughts on, are, are we saying conflicting things or are these things that you think can mesh?
Yeah, I can, I can take a crack at that for sure. I guess maybe I'll touch first on, on the thought of having two events. And in, in terms of, of capacity for planning to, and then, and, and then also in respecting the public's time and inviting people to two, I am, I, I think it would certainly be possible to host two events, but I, I, I could see there being confusion between why one might attend one versus the other, or asking people to come to two, two separate things. And that's just one thing that pops in, into my head. In terms of the, the capacity to, to plan piece, I mean, certainly there's, there's more that goes into ensuring we run an, an evening with a presentation that's, that's around efficiently and respectful of people's time and provide some value for, for people. That being said, we are sitting here in, in June and we're talking about events in October. There, if, if it's council's direction, I'm, I'm sure we could, we have the capacity to, to plan that.
I think to be clear is what we're, is what we're describing two events. I started with a, it feels like two events to me, but is this something that you think could be packaged all, all together in one, in one evening? Or do you think it needs more, more space to have the, to actually have both formats happen in a, in a meaningful way?
I, my personal view would be that having two events might be asking a lot of the public in terms of respecting their time. I, I, I think we could probably, if this was council's direction, separate an early part of the evening to a presentation, town hall style event and open up the second half to more of a mingling less formal questions piece. We know not everyone's going to be comfortable standing up and asking a question in, in front of everybody else. So having the two events combined may actually work well and allowing people to show up at different times. And I'm just sort of thinking out loud here, we may also not have the crowd at the beginning if they know they can drop in later on. I don't know if I have a great answer for you, but I, I do think that if we're looking at, at both aspects of this, it would, it would be more efficient to do it in a single evening.
Yeah, just a couple reflections. You know, I wonder if there is something where we start off with, you know, booths and, you know, presentations and booths, some time to talk to some of the subject matter experts and so on. And if we are then noting the, the themes and so on, and if there's sort of a wrap up that can be shared with the whole group about what the common topics were and responses were, that, that's one thought, although that's maybe getting into a long evening. The other piece, you know, I'm sort of wrapping my head around, when, when we have a public hearing or something, our job as a council is to make sure we're listening and we don't get into debates with people. And so I'm trying to wrap my head around in, in what sort of format, you know, my preference is if we want to hear from the public, that, that is our focus on, on hearing and listening and I guess I'm feeling a bit hesitant about a more campaign style event where we're sort of back and forth with people and trying to compete with other candidates and so on. And so I, I'm just, you know, what is this, this format? And how do we make sure whatever we do is, is constructive?
Yeah, I, I completely see your, your point about competing in no way, shape or form am I envisioning competition between us as counselors. I think we are all very much consistent in our thinking and, and supportive of each other. For me, the value that I was speaking to there was the value to the public in them asking their questions in thoughtful ways and reflecting on the answers that might be given. And so it's, I can completely see the hesitation there. And I see your question being, do we just receive the question or are we actually going to answer the questions? I do think that it's, it is a good idea for us to respond. I think it would be very valuable for our residents to hear us respond to, you know, why didn't, why isn't this in the budget? And the answer is going to be because we have that. Or because we, that would require this much increase in taxation. Right? So I, I think it's important that our residents hear those.
Okay. I think that, you know, with some of those, that would be up to staff to answer rather than us. And so, you know, i- if, if there's going to be technical responses to things. Cause I think there's sort of two types of questions. There's, there's maybe the, the technical and what's the impact on the numbers and so on. And there's the whole thing where it's maybe not so much about the budget per se, but it's about the strategic plan, the strategic priorities and are these the right priorities? And, and so I don't have an answer. I, I think these are the things, um, turn my head around. Ms. Moore.
Hi, thank you. I'll jump in if I may. Listening to the conversation, I, I'm thinking of some of the hybrid events that we have held in this room in the past where in particular in COVID, we invited the public to, to, to call in or to email in or to ask their questions. And the way we answered the questions, I think is, is what you're discussing here. It was really a, a combination of council and staff ultimately being sort of the, the, the best person to answer. And I'm, you know, if I think about the questions that we received, Counsel Hamilton mentioned a little earlier, you know, questions around prioritization. Why, you know, where is the budget for this versus this? Or sometimes, you know, very specifically, what are the technical details of this project? So I think it is important to design an event where there can be some staff spokespeople as well to answer some of the technical questions and then have council be available to answer some of the prioritization questions. So we have done something similar in a room that's a bit more controlled because of course we're all sitting here with mics. But if we keep that same concept in mind, it could be doable.
So Counsel Hamilton.
I'll put forward a motion then, if that's. So I'll put forward a motion that council directs staff to prepare a plan for a public information night, for a budget, public information night that includes a town hall style presentation, which will allow questions from the audience.
Staff, do you have enough feedback, I guess, to make, come back with a plan or, or do you feel you need a bit more direction than that?
Thank you. I think we have enough direction with, with that to prepare an event plan.
Okay. So I haven't seen a secondary, Counsel Anderson seconds. Counsel Hamilton, would you like to speak to it?
I think I've probably spoken a lot to it. I, I, I do believe this is a really important part of us taking ownership and responsibility for our decisions in an open, public, looking people in the eyes type way.
Hey, Counsel Anderson.
Yes, I'm sympathetic to us doing a bit of a trial here and I hope it won't be too challenging and daunting for staff to find a, in a hybrid model that might work for the a hybrid model that might work for the occasion. From about 2007 to about four or five years ago, I attended Budget Information Night every year and it was always town hall. But the participation was limited. And partly that may have been, well, we have shifted, we keep coming, coming back further back into the year, we used to be around Christmas time, and that was a reason for limited participation. We also tended to see the same people turn up and ask questions, but not always. An advantage of a town hall to me, and this also applies to planning events, planning department events, public information meetings, is that the audience has a chance to learn from each other. But not everybody is ready and, and, you know, adapt to go up and step onto a mic. So I think that the hybrid approach is the right approach. There are advantages to both. So as I mentioned, we did have town hall type of meetings for budget sessions every year until quite recently. So there's different styles and I think that there is something to learn perhaps. And again, I, I think that it might have other applications in other district initiatives such as in a development application, public information means that sort of thing. So I'm in favor of seeing this hybrid attempted. Thank you.
Mayor Herford?
Yeah, thank you. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. I think, I appreciate sort of where this conversation evolved to from the initial, the initial sort of thoughts back, you know, when we started discussing this. I do, I also really appreciate staff's work so far to outline, to sort of lay out the engagement piece, which I think is, is despite this motion speaking specifically to the, that one meeting, I think that what we have, what we've been presented here is a, is a step forward and is really a well-rounded way to, to engage with, with the public over the whole budget process rather than, so I have some, I'm, I'm happy to, to to see this sort of evolve to this point and, and go forward. And, but I want to make sure that we as a, as a council and continue to engage with the public at every step of, of the way, as there are some very important touch points that for those folks that are, that are really interested in things that are happening, we have those other opportunities as well, so that when we get to that final piece, the highest percentage as possible, the community sees themselves represented in the, in those decisions and ultimately in, in the budget and, and the outcomes. So yeah, but thank you for, to, to my colleague for working through that, that process with us all. And I think we're, we're in a place that I'm willing to support and explore.
Thanks Chair. I too will be supporting the motion with some hesitation. I think I, I attended almost every budget information open house between 1990 and 2006. And there were a lot of years where it was definitely bust, you know, audience of three and 12 staff members. But then there were also years where there was some hot topic that had a few people really hot and really wanting to talk. And sometimes not well-informed about the specifics of the issue and almost always at the microphone with a five-minute preamble to a 10-second question that didn't really, was more rhetoric than actual true question. So that's my hesitation with the town hall. It's very easy to find ourselves in a situation where we've got a single hot issue that a bunch of people are worked up about that hijacks everything else. But this is sounding a little bit to me like a potential trial for the year ahead. I'm prepared to allow that to, to happen to see if this hybrid model can work because with a good moderator and a good third party, and as someone who has been that moderator, I know that it, it can work. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Through the chair, I'd like to speak in favor of this. I, I appreciate the effort of increased transparency. And it gives us an opportunity to potentially pivot within the budget and reprioritize if something really important and comes up during the meeting. Yeah, I like it.
Thanks. And just for my own two cents, I'll speak in favor of the motion. Just a couple of thoughts that we have seen, I think the last couple of years anyways, good, fairly good attendance. And so hopeful that whatever we do next will be attractive to people and people will want to participate. I think there has tended to be a couple of specific interests, which relative to the scope of the budget have been small, but have received a lot of attention. And so I, I hope we can sort of make sure we're all as much as we can looking at the big picture, which is where it gets a bit interesting for me because budget discussions on some of the specifics and mechanics and so on are, are important. And that's what normally comes to my mind when I think about budget, but there's a whole bunch of other things that we are addressing in the budget, which to my mind aren't really about the budget. They are about our priorities and so on, and, and the, the dollars and cents, it's a way to measure some of those things, but in many ways, in my mind, they're less important than what are the priorities? And I guess I, I do sort of wonder for those discussions, should we be framing it as a budget discussion or is this a community priorities, community strategy discussion and so on? And that doesn't really say whether this is the wrong or right approach. It's just sort of wrestling in my mind. Do we call that a budget discussion? Is that the most constructive way to frame it? But anyways, some good ideas and good suggestions and I'm happy to try it out and, and see how it goes and looking forward to the next season of budgeting. So thank you, staff. We went a bit long here, but I thought it was a really important discussion. So yes, I will call on the councillor Hamilton's motion, call a question. All in favor? Any opposed, non-opposed, motion carries? Thank you. And we do have two staff.
I'll, I'll move both the staff recommendations.
Okay. And second, councillor French. I think we've had our discussion, so I will call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And up next, we have Ms. Kidner from the About the District Squamish Accessibility Plan will give a couple of minutes just to swap over. But just so you know who's coming up next. So I'll bring us back. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Kidner and I believe it's Ms. Tippler to present on the District of Squamish Accessibility Plan.
Thank you. Squail, hello. It's really great to be here in front of mayor and council and those who are tuning in online, staff, as well as some of the members of the Squamish Accessibility Committee. So welcome everyone. I'm Keely Kidner. I'm the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. I just want to let folks know that I am deaf, so definitely relying on these great live captions in here. And with me I have Sarah Tippler, who's the Accessibility Coordinator at the Resort Municipality of Whistler and also part of the District of Squamish Accessibility Committee. So I wanted to start by acknowledging that we are meeting on the unceded territory of Squamish Nation. And I wanted to share a quick teaching that I learned from Chief Janice George. So this word chen chen stwa is a Squamish teaching. It means to support each other and lift each other up. And I like to bring this into the space when we talk about accessibility because I think it really applies to the work that we do of making Squamish more accessible for everyone. So thinking about how we can lift each other up, how we can make sure the process that we do so is respectful and lifts up and highlights the voices of disabled people as well. And I'm really happy to start in a good way by considering the teachings of this land as we go forward with this presentation. All right. So today we'll be talking about accessibility. I'll take us through the Accessible BC Act. We'll talk a bit about the plan and then some of the impacts that this will have on the organization, how it aligns with other initiatives. And hopefully we'll have lots of time for questions and discussion. I'm going to pass it over to Sarah now to talk through some slides with you.
Great. So Squamish was built with the assumption of able-bodiedness and the population's not changing. Oh, sorry, excuse me. With, with both an increase in seniors and an influx of babies. We need to be able to accommodate people through all of these stages. Accessibility is about removing the barriers that won't allow people to fully participate in society. So the models of disability is, the typical one is the medical model. And this locates the disability in the person themselves as a direct result of their impairment or difference. In this model, disabled people are seen as deficient or abnormal and in need of a cure. The social model sees disabilities being caused by the way society is organized. For example, a lack of ramps or closed captioning is disabling, not the fact that someone uses a wheelchair or is deaf or hard of hearing. I don't know if this one has changed. Sorry. There we go. So language is a preference. It's the, you know, rule of thumb, just ask. People-first language highlights the, the person before the disability. So is used by many governments and organizations as a general practice. However, there's now been a change that that many disabled people prefer identity-first language to recognize how their disability forms an integral part of their social identities. Disabled is not a dirty word. It accurately reflects experiences in an ableist society. But when describing a group of individuals with disabilities, recognize them as people first with, who have disabilities. The Accessible BC Act was enacted in June of 2021. And initially, the accessibility requirements only applied to provincial government organizations. On September 1st of 2022, municipalities and libraries became prescribed organizations. The library will be included in this plan and will be subject to the recommendations for the built environment, service delivery and communications. The Accessibility Committee, we've had some success because of the low barrier and less structured committee formation. The Accessibility Committee has had a more fulsome composition with a spectrum of representation for varying disability types. Deaf, hard of hearing, vision loss, caregivers, neurodivergency, brain injury and physical disabilities. This was achieved through accessible recruitment and networking with a direct outreach to organizations like Squamish Adaptive, See the Sky Community Services, The Foundry and Squamish Nation. The committee future, staff will conduct some research to determine the best way forward, recognizing a need for continued community, committee involvement in the plan's implementation as well as meeting what the Accessible BC Act regulations require. Back to you.
Thanks, Sarah. So as you saw, there were three elements to the Accessible BC Act. One was to create an accessibility committee. The other was to create a plan and to use a public feedback. So to develop our plan, we wanted to involve the community and really hear from folks with disabilities. So we did a robust community engagement that happened over a, a couple of months in the spring. And you can see listed there all, all a bunch of the different things that staff managed to, to do in order to connect with folks. I wanted to just highlight a couple of them. So at the bottom, the scroll about and the roll about. So the roll about was basically a tour with disabled folks and staff around different district facilities and streetscapes to experience accessibility barriers in person. We also were able to access some transportation together. We all took a handy dart over to Brennan Park. And I just want to direct your attention to the photo. This is actually a photo of someone on the round, on the roll about. And you can see there's a crack in the pavement and as we were walking, we actually saw a barrier happen. And this happened multiple times because there are multiple barriers. So it was a really great experience for us to see in person. You know, what happens when you're trying to cross the road and how, you know, which way wheels go and things like that. The scroll about was the same thing, but we did it in an online environment where we toured our websites and that was also really helpful for staff. I also want to highlight a serendipitous meeting that we had on our roll about. We were approached by someone who had come from Vancouver, who was actually a community journalist with Accessible Media Inc. And she had vision loss and she came to join, actually she wanted to find out about our survey. And she came across the roll about. And so we invited her to join with us and come along on the handy dart and we gave her a map so she could take notes. So it was a really fantastic example of, you know, just being open and, and being able to have folks join in as they were and, and being accessible to, you know, anyone who wanted to participate. So all of this work resulted in over 750 comments, which were then analyzed and made up the plan. And staff also created a list of feedback for departments. So this plan is organized very high level, but all of that grain, granular level feedback was, was given to different departments to integrate into work plan. And there were some deemed out of jurisdiction that were also given to community organizations. In terms of the plan, it is laid out there in the agenda package, but I just wanted to highlight the vision that the District of Squamish provides spaces, services and communications that allow everyone to be included without experiencing barriers to access. And the plan is organized according to different domains, the built environment and public spaces, transportation. And you can see some of the goals outlined there. Other domains included communications and information design, culture, so corporate culture, service design and delivery and employment, looking at our own internal employment practices. We also looked at feedback tools and have developed an email address for folks who want to provide feedback on the plan with plans to develop, to develop some feedback button on our website in the future. Obviously, this plan is very comprehensive. It expands, it spans a, a lot of different departments and services all over the district. It also spans a lot of different disabilities, as Sarah said. So this will have overarching impacts on budget and organization at large. So investments will be needed. We are considering the, in the five-year plan, what kind of elements we can bring in from the accessibility plan. And the accessibility plan is legislated to be reviewed every three years as well. This will be an ongoing process. There's lots of evolving concepts and changes. Staff plan to develop an implementation, implementation strategy, which will further outline those budget needs. And we are also looking at grants. They are starting to become available, but advocacy is definitely needed. In terms of impacts across the organization, due to the universal nature of accessibility, there will be impacts all over. Staff, a staff position has been recommended to continue coordinating and managing the accessibility plan. But I want to highlight that staff are already integrating some of these items into their current work plans, such as staff training, new procedures. And there was already a lot of processes that were already happening, projects and initiatives. In terms of alignment with other initiatives, so the District of Squamish Strategic Plan that was recently adopted does consider accessibility. The District of Squamish Inclusion Strategy has as its fifth goal that our physical and virtual work environments are accessible and inclusive. And as I mentioned, there are a number of initiatives already underway. And I want to mention that part of this is the benefit that staff receive from being involved in the rollabouts and the scrollabouts. So not only have we been able to see for ourselves what needs to happen, begin to integrate them into our work plans and initiatives, but we have built some relationships across the community, which are going to help with the implementation of the plan at large. In terms of next steps, the plan has been developed. However, the design work hasn't happened yet. We want to make it look a little bit nicer, but we also want to make sure that it is fully accessible. So if council endorses the plan today, staff will continue to develop the plan's design in order to make it as accessible as possible. This will coincide with September 10th, in, which is an event that we're planning called the Walk and Roll. This will be a celebration of accessibility. And during this event, we will launch the final, fully designed version of the plan to the community. And as I mentioned, the implementation, implementation strategy will be developed to flesh out some of those upcoming actions and what can be achieved in the next little while. Before we finish, I wanted to point out some kudos and some learnings. So the Accessible BC Act deadline is September 1st. With this plan, we are now on track to meet that deadline and actually possibly come in ahead of time. So I really want to highlight the work of the Accessibility Committee, staff, and the community members who participated in this work. It's been a very fast process, but it's been a very deep and comprehensive process. I also want to highlight some of the current district initiatives that came out of the feedback. So community members have talked about NeuroFit and Sensory Skate programs that we're already offering, our accessible emergency services training, our handy dart offerings, and a personal one for me, live captioning at council meetings and in all of our communications videos. And as with anything, there have been a lot of learnings through this process. So one of them is the engagement included, asking a question in other languages. And staff researched the most common non-official mother tongue languages according to the latest census that are spoken in Squamish. And so we were able to include the question in Punjabi, Spanish, German, and Filipino Tagalog. We also learned a lot about holding accessible meetings and locations, as well as accessible document creation, with the expectation that there will be lots more to learn as we design the rest of the plan over the summer. And so that brings us to the resolution, asking for endorsement of the accessibility plan. And I'll turn it over to the chair for questions and discussion. Oi Chok, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. I see in the report there's reference to the, sorry, the Trails Master Plan, as well as the Transportation Master Plan Initiative. I was wondering if the Active Transportation Plan, which might be updated in years ahead, is also something that the initiative has had interface with and made contact with or?
So the Active Transportation Master Plan? Okay, yes, through the chair. So I failed to mention that as that plan was being developed, the survey and public engagement, we were able to include all comments from that survey. And they were coded for accessibility-related concerns and were integrated into this plan as well. So there's been some collaboration with staff on these two plans.
Thank you. My next question concerns perhaps the implementation strategy that you've referenced. Firstly, I happen to be hard of hearing. And recently, I had somebody reveal to me what is available in technology today. And it was a mind blower. I was not aware of the kinds of tools that are available today. This also applies to people with mobility issues. I was speaking with a friend yesterday and I would like to have just dragged him to a clinic and pointed out that there's a solution for his particular issue. My question really is, is there merit in considering that kind of outreach or information access for people with diverse, whether it's computer literacy, which is a form of accessibility, or physical mobility, the technology and mobility aids that are available today? Is there a role, for example, or for the library or for this plan ongoing, to incorporate that kind of outreach, making information available for people needing to solve issues?
Through the chair, absolutely. I think there's definitely some role to play in terms of information for the community. We're looking at accessibility training for staff, awareness training. But there's definitely a great place, we are in a great place to bring that information to the community as well. Do you want to say anything, Sarah?
Yeah, I would just say, like, within the communications aspect of this plan, that it includes not just document accessibility, but it's website accessibility, it's social media, it's simple language. It's, you know, making things to be as universally designed. So it's going to be intuitive and a bit more understandable. So my understanding is that that will be an aspect of the communications plan.
Finally, Chair, and this is also perhaps in relation to an implementation strategy. Sarah Tippler, over the years, she has served on quite a number of committees as an advocate and representative. And my question is, how do we, and I didn't kind of see this explicitly addressed in the report, but perhaps in the implementation strategy, how do we ensure ongoing representation, ongoing support for advocacy? We used to have a council committee of various kinds, seniors mixed with that. And things have come and gone. But how do we address this? How do we make the plan durable in that that we can ensure that it is going to be implemented? Have a watchdog capacity, if you like. How do we institutionalize this plan in the form of an advisory or oversight or some representative body? You've had so much experience with this sort of thing.
I mean, I would think that that through the research of understanding like how this group of people, the committee that exists right now, whether or not that gets formalized. But it should be a group that, as the plan progresses, that that's brought back to the committee. So the committee can comment on it. If there's large projects, development projects that are coming through that are going to have, you know, multiple community amenities, that that also be brought, you know, the committee is utilized to provide some feedback. It's, you know, as a part of the Accessible BC Act, they're meant to review, you know, sort of what happens annually. And this needs to be reported on annually. So, you know, that it would be, there's going to be a number of checks and balances along the way that it would be brought before the committee. You know, these are the things that were accomplished. What are the priorities with the outstanding list? So that that body, that group of, you know, people with lived experience can then comment on all number of aspects. And again, going back to the formation of the committee, I mean, I think that this committee is, you know, is actually more fulsome than the longstanding committee that Whistler has had in that we, you know, primarily have people with physical disabilities. But this, you know, this committee has, you know, much broader context where, you know, there's ASL instructors, there's, you know, people who are blind. There are people with brain injuries, like. And through that, then the review of what's been accomplished over the year. Or, you know, if you need feedback from the committee, that that is going to give a more fulsome response of how to prioritize or, you know, bring up the importance to back to council.
Thank you very much. Counsel Hamilton?
Thanks very much for all the work on this. I'm particularly impressed that this plan might actually come together and be submitted before schedule. Extraordinarily impressive. One thing I was actually surprised to not see in the document, and maybe I missed it, I think I, was snow removal. Were there no comments, concerns, or questions about snow removal? Because I know I've heard about that as an accessibility issue.
Through the chair, yes, there were some comments about snow removal. Interestingly, both praising the district for the work that's been done and also identifying further barriers, which is what is expected in different areas of town. So because this plan is very high level, that would be subsumed under some of the work with public works and roads and creating those accessible routes. However, as I mentioned, those individual comments were still coded and collected. And they will be going to different departments because there were some very useful, you know, specific areas that have been identified or specific stories that will be helpful for staff to know about.
And in the report to council, there was a comment about advocacy at the UBCM. Do you have a specific ask? Because we could go and advocate with potential, maybe it will go somewhere. But I think that it's much more likely, if something is specific, we're more likely to have something happen. So do you have a specific ask that we might approach the UBCM with?
Through the chair, thank you for that question. I believe at this point, we are looking for some sort of funding to help municipalities implement some of the actions that have been identified in their plans that they have been asked to create under the Accessible BC Act.
So I had a question. And building off the photo you showed about the barrier that was experienced, I think with the walker. And I looked at that and I thought, well, you could address that by changing the design of the sidewalk surface or possibly the design of the wheels of the device being used to navigate. And I'm wondering if there are any general philosophies or principles about why you tend to prefer one approach to the other? Or is it sort of everything you can always? Or just wondering if you can speak to that?
The city of North Vancouver has made, excuse me, a policy change where they now don't allow any interlocking pavers, that it's all saw cut concrete for that very reason, because of the settlement issues. So, you know, rather than saying, okay, everybody, if you're coming to Squamish, you need this size of wheels to go around. Obviously, the sidewalk is going to be an easier thing to change. But I would be looking at, you know, potentially removing pavers and having saw cut concrete would be the preference. And I know just through ADP and my comments to, like, AKR Architecture, is that their choices now would be to do colored concrete with saw cut as opposed to pavers.
I think, and just sort of building on that and, you know, just looking at, there is a lot of fairly, for lack of a better term, natural areas of Squamish. And I do wonder if, you know, if we're looking at our budgets, do we put, you know, X amount into improving sidewalk design? And then Y amount into procuring devices and chairs and whatnot to help people navigate and making those available? Is that part of a strategy that other people have pursued successfully? Or would you really focus on sort of surfaces and, I guess, environmental design before a navigational tool, making those sorts of things available?
Again, because chairs are so personalized, that it would be the surfaces that you're looking at. And you'd want to be strategic, right? So you want to look at like, what are the main routes from where accessible parking is to doctor's offices to, you know, and then address those. And I mean, I think that first of all, before you look at redoing sidewalks altogether, is actually just ensuring that there's curb cuts to those sidewalks that may or may not be fabulous. But if you have a curb cut, at least it's usable. And then you strategically look at, as things need to be redone, what's the best use? But I would say that, you know, adaptive sports equipment would be something that you might want to consider purchasing. But, you know, wheelchairs for people, probably not.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Herford?
Yes, thank you for all the work and the report and supporting presentation. I was curious, I was really interested to see the web aim piece. I hadn't run across that before and I didn't go too far down that rabbit hole. But I thought it was really interesting piece as some of the built space pieces are really, you know, challenging and resource intensive to impact. And this piece, I think, can be, feels like a little bit easier to implement as we, just sort of going forward, we can evolve over time. Do you have some specific, like, there's that, I'm trying to think about this strategically, the piece around sort of auditing and updating versus as things are coming online or evergreening, you know, rolling those concepts in. Like, how have you seen this rolled out in other, maybe in other places? Because it feels like there's just so much opportunity here with this particular piece.
So what's happening in Whistler is that, you know, leading up to the games, of course, we had to have audits done to present what was existing. What we've done now is we've actually tried to integrate it into regular practices. So for instance, you know, twice a year, the village crew will go through and look for deficiencies. And all of this was done on, you know, not even a Word document. It was scribbled in a notebook, not that great to share. And so what we've implemented is we're using the Fieldmap apps to actually map all of the accessible infrastructure on the GIS. And through that, we're capturing the asset. And then there is an assessment of that asset. So it's assessing, like, if there's a tactile pad, is it a cast in place tactile pad? Is it surface applied? And then you can go through and look at, okay, what's the wear and tear on that? So just by mapping everything and getting everything down, then you're doing an assessment of sorts. And then you can actually also use those as metrics going forward of going, you know, we installed two more tactile pads, we replaced XYZ. So in Whistler, the GIS use has been really useful and it's been a really good tool for sharing. And then the data that's collected in the future can be used as a forward-facing map, right? So somebody could then customize the map. If they have a visual impairment, say, tell me where the audible signals are, show me where the tactile pads are, and you can get through. So it's trying to, you know, figure out which tools can you use that will fit within regular work programs? And then also be generating the information that you need to know about what exists. And, you know, maybe where are there spaces that need to be addressed?
Thank you. The walk and roll, when do you see this happening? I see a September rollout for the plan more broadly. Is it an activity to support that? I'm trying to get it in my calendar as early as, around my radar as early as possible so I have the best chance of being able to participate in some way.
Through the chair, you'll want to put September 10th in the calendar. So the Walk and Roll event is being organized by a smaller committee in collaboration with the Downtown Business Improvement Association, R Squamish, and the Squamish Accessibility Commitment, as well as the District of Squamish. And it is a space for us to celebrate and launch the plan. But it's also about de-stigmatizing disability, celebrating accessibility, and really building up awareness and getting the public educated and having a celebratory atmosphere. So, yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun and hopefully something that will continue in the future as well.
Just on that note, and speaking of Darcy, I'd been anticipating a council roll along or scroll along. And maybe strategically, that's best placed closer to budget time or it's part of the Walk and Roll event. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to, is that something in the plans for us to experience some of those things?
Through the chair, that's definitely something we could build into the plan. So part of our work in the plan is building up awareness and training for staff around introduction to accessibility. So we would be very open and keen to include council, mayor and council in that as well.
Okay, I would definitely be appreciative of that. Seeing some nods around the table, so I'll just take that as a, I think, yeah, there'd be some eagerness for that. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, so we do have a recommendation to endorse the plan. Just on, Counsel Greenlaw, you're moving that? Counsel French seconds. Counsel Greenlaw, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, well, I really love what you guys are doing in the community. And I really enjoy that you have such a fun and creative way of engaging people. It's really difficult to highlight barriers that people experience until you experience them. And then they become, it's like you see them everywhere, you know, you really open your eyes. So I really appreciate the way that you're opening the conversation. And this is a really fun approach. And I'm really excited about the Walk and Roll, or, yeah, the, sorry, what's it called? It's Walk and Roll, right? Yeah, I'm very much looking forward to that. I think it's going to be really fun and I really appreciate all the work you're doing in our community. So thank you.
Counsel French? Oh, Mayor Herford?
Just thank you to everyone involved in this project. I think it's I think it's such great work and so much of it makes so much sense, yet hasn't really been put together in, 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 sort of in one, in one place for these, for these objectives to live. And I think that's great. I will also point out that I went to Sunday, September 10th to rough in a date and it's already in my calendar as a placeholder. So the technology is working and I'm looking forward to being there at the launch event and supporting the action items outlined as we go about our work here. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and I'd my thanks as well. When I first heard about the regulations coming into effect, I had some anxiety because it seemed like an enormous task and not a lot of time to do it. So I just thank the committee for getting together because we just have to start working on it. And it's really good to see that we are taking concrete action. And I know there's a huge amount of work to do. But I'm very pleased with the crew that's come together to work on this and to help us through this and looking forward to making all this much more of a priority. So thank you. So with that, I guess I will call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you. And we will take a, we will take a five minute break, so we'll come back at 2:40. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Plum to speak to us about the Squamish Municipal Airport.
Neil Plum here, Director of Real Estate, and I'm here with Chantel Malan and I have Triplett from Real Estate as well. And actually, Chantel is going to take us through the slide deck.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chantel. Yep, Chantel from Real Estate. Oh, what's happening here? We are not sharing anymore. There we go. So we're here to obtain counsel endorsement of the draft airport strategic plan interim recommendations spring 2023 update. And unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, HM Arrow, who is our consultants on the strategic plan, were not able to make it. But if there are any questions that we need them for, we'll make sure we come back to council with those. So just a little bit of background here. We, in, back in December of 2021, council did endorse the process scope for the strategic plan. Since that time, we've done some analysis and came forth in June of 2022 with the interim recommendations report. Since that time, we implemented the recommendations that were presented in that report in June of 2022. And we are here today to present to you the spring update of those recommendations that we have implemented and further recommendations from the update. So in your report, Table 2.1, on the left hand side of the screen here, included or identified the status of the recommendations of the initial interim recommendations report. Some things worthy to note here is that the items in dark green are completed or ongoing. And in light green, we are currently in progress of those recommendations. There are some recommendations that were paused and that we will be continuing to bring forward. There were four, or sorry, the implementation over the past year represented significant improvements to the ground operations management at the airport. Some of those items were four key safety upgrades to the apron, shown on the right hand side of the screen. We did adopt a new airport bylaw back in January governing the use of the lands at the airport. A successful pilot program of the airport ambassador services is still ongoing. And we did implement, implementation of the aircraft logging system to track airport activity. Based on the experience in the past year, HM Arrow also provided in the spring 2023 update report, updated recommendations or timing for items that still need to be completed from the initial recommendations. And they are showing as ongoing initiatives or in progress in this table. And additional recommendations that they're putting forth are shown as new. The majority of these recommendations are targeted for completion through the balance of 2023. And those include continuing the airport ambassador services. We are implementing new signage of rules and regulations at the airport. We will be reviewing an online fee system to collect tie down fees and are continuing to implement the noise impacts, which includes the email notification system and our continued community engagement with the noise tracking. Based on the above, it is recommended that the initial airport process scope that was originally endorsed be brought forward as shown on the screen here. We did, several initiatives have been completed through steps four and five. And six have been advanced. We will be completing those throughout the months of May to August before we bring forth some community engagement. So we are asking for an endorsement of the updated airport process scope on the screen. With that, the recommendation is on the screen that we would like the council to endorse the draft interim recommendations spring update report. And I will open the floor to any questions.
Hey, counsel? Counselor Anderson?
I note that the land use planning review, which is situated under the noise manage, community noise management section of the report. There's a reference to staff capacity challenges. And so this is now scheduled for completion in quarter four of this year. I note that it's an initiative, the land use planning review is to be led by the planning department. And I'll quote, "to explore the use of notification tools to inform future owners and residents of the potential for aircraft noise." My question is, and we don't have a planning staff person here, but I wonder whether it might be considered that there's other, of course, neighborhoods or circumstances of interest with respect to these notification tools here on the waterfront, a few years ago, received a lot of discussion, but also the Rod and Gun Club facility and new types of buildings and higher buildings being built near points of noise emissions. My question really is, the scope of that planning department initiative, might it be, might it merit a broader scope to look at where we're at with our noise bylaw? And where these notification tools might apply otherwise than at the airport? And perhaps you need to be, might need to be updated? It's a general question and perhaps for the planning department. And maybe I'll just note it as a consideration. A few years ago, I believe, there was some discussion to a review of the noise bylaw. I don't remember whether that was undertaken, but there was some discussion of introducing a new type of good neighbor bylaw, that sort of thing. I'll leave it at that. It's maybe more of a comment. But it seems that, seems to me that there's experience to draw on, say, from the Rod and Gun Club's Noise Covenant program. I know that they have questions about new types of buildings coming along and their heights and so on, as to whether the scope might be reviewed as to what that planning department initiative is as it arises out of the report here.
Okay, looks like staff didn't want to add anything to respond to that. Counsel, any further questions on the recommendations? Mayor Horford?
Thank you. In the, sorry, I was trying to name the table here. I think it was Table 4.1, just kind of goes through some actions and some new initiatives. I was curious around the commencement of using the Community Noise Update email notification system. It's the only one that says partial implementation. And I wondered what the difference is there between other things that are scored as, as ongoing initiatives or in progress or just new? And, yeah, could you speak to that, to that piece?
Thank you, through the chair. So yes, the differentiation between partial implementation and in progress is that things that are in progress are just working through the natural cycle of putting them in place. In this case, where it said partial implementation, it's something that we started, but it's something we recognized as we rolled through that process that there would be some upgrades that we could, we could bring forward. So we did offer the service at the time, we introduced it and created it. And we just feel there's some increased opportunities for us to engage with the tenants at the airport to make sure that that system is, because it was a new system, was operating properly. Because there were a couple of situations where things occurred that we didn't quite get out to the community in the right time. So we just want to keep working with the tenants at the airport to up, sort of upgrade our efforts there.
Okay, thank you. And similarly, the repairs to gravel parking positions? I'm just curious where the, sort of what the scope of that is? And was that something that was budgeted for? Is this just come out of operation? Or how does that piece, where does that piece sit and all of that?
Through the chair, that is a new recommendation from HM Arrow upon feedback from our airport ambassador and just our own visual inspections at the airport that due to some snow damage, those were new in the fall, that there is some work that is required to repair those back to their initial kind of state. So we are working through that and evaluating what the cost is of that. At the moment, we are looking at what potentially paving of those itinerant pads might look like as well. Depending on the scope of that, we should be able to do that within our operating budget. But we are evaluating that as, as we speak.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions for now.
Not seeing any further counsel questions. We do have a resolution to endorse the interim recommendations spring 2023 update. Someone want to move that? Counselor French, second by Counselor Hamilton. Counselor French, did you want to speak to it?
Once again, staff have done an impressive job when I, with the future of the airport and our planning of it. When I think back to the early 1990s, when there were many tension filled discussions about the airport and broadly across the community, ranging from tenants at the airport to folks who were worried about noise. There was a real lack of vision for the airport and we have come a long way. And where we're at now just really highlights and illustrates the hard work that has gone into our airport. And I'm looking forward to advancing from here.
Counselor Hamilton, did you want to speak to it? Okay, Mayor Horford?
Yes, thank you. Speaking in support of the motion and just thank you to staff for all their, their hard work. And I know our consultant's been an extremely valuable part of this, as have our airport tenants and users. And I think this is a prudent and meaningful step, step forward to, on the way to sort of a longer range plan with that, that facility. So happy to support and I look forward to sort of the next steps of this, of this process going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, speaking in support, I know there's been a lot of competing interests and, you know, some more work to do for sure. But appreciate the attention to some of the feedback we've gotten from the community in the interim, trying to address some of those things. I think we've made some really concrete things within our power to do. And so I very much appreciate staff's work on that. And I think this report is well supported and the recommendations make sense. So happy to support. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we, I think I will call a recess. That's it for the open, I believe? So we'll call a recess until quarter after three. Yeah, maybe I'll do a motion to close. Motion to close, Mayor Horford, Counselor Greenlaw, all those in favor? And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And we'll take a break till 3:15. Thank you. Oh, and people who are joining us, please join us on the other line.